Mr. Chair, you have six o'clock.
Okay, six o'clock, so we can bring this meeting to order. First, I have to make a note that this is being recorded by Area 58. If you would join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the first things on our agenda are appointments. Carrie Sellers did call. She's on her way. She is stuck on a train, so hopefully she will be or just wait until she gets here. But Josh Curtis is here. And this is an interview for the Town Government Study Committee. And so, just, we were talking a minute ago, but the town, this is a committee that we, the Board of Selectmen is setting up as kind of an advisory committee to consider basically all of our town operations in terms of how the government works. Right now, everyone knows we're the town meeting form of government that has a lot of elected officials, and so it hasn't been really looked at in, I don't think it's ever been looked at, ever since 1734 frankly, when we were first incorporated, so we're pretty much stuck in the history there. Maybe it still should be that way, but we wanted to put together a group of folks that were interested. So, do you want to tell us about your interest and why you think you'd like to do this work?
Yeah, absolutely. So, my name is Josh Curtis. We moved here five years ago from Hawaii after I retired from the service. I was airborne infantry, served in Iraq and Afghanistan, received a Purple Heart and Bronze Star of Valor. After separating from the military, we purchased a beautiful home in Halifax five years ago, and we just fell in love with the town. I mean, it has such a great community. I mean, the schools like the heartbeat of the community. Everyone's so involved. The agricultural part is beautiful. And I just want to find a way that I can help based on my history to just improve it some way, you know? Based on my values, I think that I can do a great job.
Okay. Really, this is a committee that will probably not be able to come up with an answer quickly. I don't know how long it's going to take, but we certainly wouldn't be able to get something that would be like done in a couple of weeks. So, it'll involve some work. It'll involve some kind of a commitment, and are you able to do that?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, okay.
Oh, no, well, first off, Josh, I want to thank you for your service. I read through your resume. It's very impressive. So, thank you. Thank you very much. As far as collaborating with folks, are you okay? Let's say you get into the thick of things with an idea, and a lot of times in committee work, you have people that have different, very different ideas. How are you with kind of working through those differences to come to an agreement?
So, based on my history, I actually worked with a three-star general doing Joint Visits Bureau, and we helped foreign armies actually improve their operations. And we helped them create a vision and a philosophy, and then create a whole new culture that would actually accelerate their performance within their actual government operations.
That's fantastic.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that I think, you know, what Jonathan said is this won't be quick or easy. I think it's valuable work, and I just would ask and expect that all committee members, yourself and others, whoever's nominated, go into things with an open mind, you know? No preconceived notions, kind of an open box, hearing other people, appreciating what they're coming from, and kind of maybe collaborate towards a common goal for the group. And I hope that that's something that you can come to the table with, or all committee members can. No preconceived notions or agendas. And that's, is that something that sounds like could be for you?
Yes, absolutely.
I think it's important.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Good. So, we have one more interview to do tonight, and then we can make a decision on this. I don't, you know, we originally set this as a, I think, a five-member group, but it doesn't have to be five, because if we think we have six good people, we should use six.
That was my question.
It's our committee. We can do anything we want.
The candidates look, they all look fantastic for different reasons, so I'd be open to something like that, depending on, you know, how the Sellers presents.
Okay. You're welcome to stay. We're just going to move on on our agenda. Do you like to stay and see how town government works?
Yeah.
Good. Welcome.
Thanks, Josh.
So, we have Candy scheduled for 6:10, so I'm going to keep to that, but I see that we do have Mr. McSherry here. Do you want to come on up front, maybe?
Sure.
Why don't you have a seat? Yeah, please, have a seat. So, this is kind of a follow-up to the dog issue, and I think the board had some questions about your plan on how to handle the dog if you weren't there, and also on the fence, if I'm not mistaken, is that right?
Yeah. I think, I know, Tom, you've had, you had questions for Mr. McSherry.
Yeah, just, you know, what, the notice that you sent as a follow-up to our meeting was kind of just short and quick. Are there any detailed plans or anything that you've done or planned to do as a result of the conversation that we had? Monk, can you?
Yeah, so we're going to start training the dog. Hopefully, the first week of November is when I'll be able to start. I tried to be able to start before then, but unfortunately, my schedule just won't allow that. Right now, I'm planning on the first week of November, start training the dog more. In the meantime, I've taken over, entered the muzzle training with the dog. So far, that's worked out really well. Needs to really get in the hand of it. So, anytime we're off the property, the dog is wearing the muzzle. On the property, we stay in the backyard. If he's not wearing the muzzle, the backyard is surrounded by a six-foot fence.
Do you have the same dog walker as you had before, Ms. Chassie? Is that her name?
Yes.
Is she still, she's a singular person who walks the dog off the property?
Yes.
And where will you be training the dog in November?
So, the same dread I used when I initially got the dog. Her name is Michelle Gillis. She'll be the, she works at Summit.
Okay. Any other?
Any, quickly, any other incidents or anything with any other dogs, with the dog?
No.
Okay. So, I think the board is particularly concerned because it seems like that dog really very aggressive with other animals perhaps, and we are concerned for public safety. We just don't want these things to happen at all, and certainly if we can prevent it in the future. That's why we're, we're trying to make sure that all of the measures that you're going to take will make sure that this just doesn't happen again. So, that's what we're really mostly concerned about. Okay. Any other questions from the board? Any other comments, suggestions?
No. The dog's been registered. You got a license for the dog, too?
Yeah. He is licensed.
Okay.
And just to be clear on this, Ms. Chassie, the walker, if she's not available to walk, the dog does not leave the property without either you or her at the moment. Is that correct?
Okay. Thank you for coming in. We appreciate it. Sorry we had to, you know, bother you with the police department and everything, but we really, we take, as we have to, take these public safety things very seriously, where we don't want to have any, any problems in the neighborhoods of all, and certainly not with animals. So, we're very, very sensitive to that, and that's why we're making sure that it's done the right way. Okay? Thanks again.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in.
Great. Is that Ms. Sellers in the back? Hi. Come on up front, please.
I'm sincere apologies.
No, thank you for making the efforts. That's wonderful. So, you are here for our Government Study Committee, so let me just explain to you a little bit about what that's all about. This is a committee that the board is establishing as an advisory committee to the board, really, and the goal is to evaluate the current operations of the government, our government, the town government. So, some of the ideas that have come up in the past are moving certain town officials from elected officials to appointed officials, how that would, if that's a good idea, how that would be done. Everything is on the table. We've been a open town meeting since 1734, and that hasn't changed, and maybe it shouldn't change, but you're welcome to look at that and make suggestions and things like that. We don't expect this to be a real quick process. We really think that this is something that takes some study and some work, and some folks that are interested in it would have, kind of be in it for the long haul, not 100 years, but, you know, for long enough to try to bring it to a conclusion and to come up with some reasonable suggestions. That's what we're after. How do you feel about all of that?
I'm glad to be here. It would take a little time, because I think the questions that you're asking are going to take some studying. We'll talk.
Okay. Do you want to tell us about yourself and why you're interested in this, this committee?
Yeah, absolutely. I am a resident of Halifax now for only about five years. I grew up in the Woodman and Hanson area, but was a volunteer in delivery.
You're a social climber.
I was a social climber, for sure. Finally made it.
From the outhouse to the penthouse.
I'm a big advocate for Halifax, so.
I love the town. I love how small it is, and how everybody sort of, you know, is very involved and care, obviously cares deeply, and that can come across in a lot of different ways. I work in the city. I work in Cambridge for a biotech company. I've been working biotech for about 20, 20 years. So, over the course of my career, I am actually assistant to the CEO. So, I'm pretty good at like gaining consensus. I'm pretty good, I'm also the manager of corporate communications, and I think communications is definitely something that would be an asset on this particular committee, being able to not only speak confidently and listen, but also be able to kind of explain the thinking behind things. I noticed that, you know, at town meetings, sometimes it can get a little heated, and just being able to take a step back and take a breath and be able to really calmly explain your, your thinking and the reasoning behind certain decisions that I think is going to be important, and that's something I think I could bring to the table.
Ultimately, if we make changes, which I assume there'll be some suggestion to do that, it'll be something that will be, have to be at least voted on at the annual, at one of our town meetings. And so, that will be, always requires like a thoughtful presentation and that type of thing. So, we have to think about it in that, in terms of that. It's not like, you know, we're going to just write it down on a piece of paper and say, well, this is how it's going to happen. It's all got to be voted by the citizens, and so they sometimes need to be very detailed explanations as to why you want to make changes. And some people have very strong opinions about the way things are or should be, so we, you know, really have to be logical in everything we do on that.
Yeah, I feel like I'm weird enough in the town that I'm not entrenched in 118 unit area.
That's good.
But I've been here long enough to care deeply about how this goes, and I want to spend the rest of my life, or hopefully a long life here. And I just, I don't know, I'm just at an age where my children are grown, and I want to do something for my community, and I just thought this would be the way for me to serve.
Okay. Questions from the board?
Carrie, again, your resume is very impressive. I love that you have the, the private sector experience, but I know going in and out of Boston is how, I have a wife that commutes in and out of Boston, too, so probably on the same train you were on today. Time commitment going to be an issue at all, or are you going to be able to cover up time for this? Because as John said, it's, it's going to be a little bit of a commitment here.
Yeah, for sure. So, it's a very fair question. I do work a lot, but I work in the city Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, so it sort of is as much a fact-finding mission for me tonight as it is for you. Like, I'm not sure if it's going to be, you know, Wednesday's four o'clock, that's probably going to take me out of the running. But if it's a Monday, or Friday, or even a Tuesday or Thursday night, I have some flexibility. There's one day a week I don't have any flexibility.
Okay. Generally speaking, the committee itself will decide when it's going to meet and how often. So, and one of us, we haven't decided yet, will be the chairman of that committee to help keep things moving. So, you know, if it, if it works for the committee to meet every third, Friday, every third Thursday or whatever at six o'clock, that's, that's what they'll do. And then there'll probably be some stuff that needs to be done in between.
I would assume, yeah.
Yeah. But that's kind of the commitment part of it on that, so. Tom?
Yeah, just the same thing I asked Josh earlier, and the same thing I asked the other three candidates last week. I think it's not so much a question, just a comment. I think it's very, it's valuable, valuable work, and it's a time commitment, and I think the single biggest factor is like you mentioned, not going in entrenched, going in with an open mind, not predisposed, any, you know, predetermined notions of what you think should happen, but rather listening to the other committee members, bringing the ideas to the table, collaborating with each other, come to some sort of common ground or communication in the middle. Because very few things are black and white, and I think it's the most important thing is to respect others, and part of that is going in dry, with a clean, blank, white slate. Is that something that you're comfortable with and able to?
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. I'm a very big proponent of agility of thought. I think it's really easy to have an idea and stick with it, but it takes some, some real patience and intelligence and flexibility to be able to listen and rethink your own stance. I don't really think that so much is like pivoting or flip-flopping, as much as like you learn more and you learn better, and that's going to inform your opinion. So, first and foremost, if you're serving the town, you have to be open to hearing folks, and I'm a good listener.
Thank you.
Excellent. Okay. Any more questions for us?
I don't think so. Just the size of the committee was five?
I'm sorry.
The size of the committee?
Oh.
Up for debate, maybe?
We can do whatever we want. It's our committee. It's always, we're going to cast thousands if we want, or we could have just one person, or whatever we want to do. I will say that we have, we have five excellent candidates, and I would not be adverse to making all five of them members of the committee and one of us as the chairman personally. That's how I see it.
I think it's shaping up to be an all-star team. I mean, honestly, with, with her private sector stuff, with Josh's military background, we have, we have Jim that's involved with our finance committee. We have Sandy that, that has been here for a long time, and we have Mary that is a fantastic energetic person that attacks, you know, whatever's in front of her. So, I, I think it's literally an all-star team. I'd go with all five.
Yeah, and I have all those sentiments, and I also think that if people are willing to put the time and volunteer for the betterment of the town, whoever we decide.
Absolutely.
Shouldn't and shouldn't be involved. So, I think the commitment, the involvement, the level of enthusiasm is something from all five that we've seen, and I have no problem recommending all five.
Okay. So, do you want to take it up now in terms of a vote? You feel comfortable doing that? You're welcome to, you're welcome to stay, and actually, GM sitting behind you is one of our candidates, and Joshua sitting behind him is another one. So, you got three out of the five are all writing over here, so. All right, so, well, I'd be glad to make the motion that we appoint.
Do you want to do open terms? I do.
Yes.
I think this was before.
I think it'd be open.
Way back.
Yeah.
This is what you know.
Appoint Joshua Curtis, Mary Gravines, Sandy Nolan, Carrie Sellers, and Jim Walters to the Town Government Study Committee. It's an open term, so it doesn't have an ending date until they, they finish their work.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion? All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So, thank, we want to thank all of you folks very much for this. Now, what, what has to happen, and I know you folks haven't been involved before, you have to go see the town clerk. You can't do it tonight because he's not here.
No, he's not here, but well, I'll send you a letter just saying that you've been appointed, and then may I call the clerk's office and just see if they're going, if someone's going to be there to sway you in. So, that'll be over the next couple of days. Probably get that letter to him like next week. Okay?
And we now need to decide who's going to be the chairman of that committee, because it'll be one of us, and that person will be responsible for setting up the first meeting. And we'll do that with assistance of Cody and whatever, town council, anything that's needed to do, to do the work. All right, so, it was my idea. I'm willing to do it. I also think, though, it wouldn't be a bad idea for either Tom or John to be the chairman. So, I talked to Tom a few minutes ago, and I don't know what you feel, John, so.
I'm, I'm, whatever the, the board needs, you know, whatever the board needs. Obviously, you're the most senior, we'll say.
Never get that old man.
No. You've been around the block a couple of times, so, I mean, I think your, I think your knowledge and expertise is, is vital, but, I mean, I also think, you know, like the idea of having somebody that's maybe a fresh set of eyes, so whatever the board wants to do.
I, I feel comfortable with a fresh set of eyes. I think Tom might be that fresh set of eyes.
Sure.
If he's interested, I think he might be.
Yeah, I mean, I would, like I told you before, I would defer to each of you, based on seniority and knowledge, based on what we've done. I'm still a new guy, only five months in. I do have some ideas that are, you know, fresh, as you mentioned, but I certainly respectfully defer to each of you, either of you, if that was something that you were interested in.
All right, so I'll make the motion that we ask Tom to be the chairman for the Government Study Committee.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion? I do want to point out, I think, I think what our group here, these five individuals, the, I like the diversity that we have here. We've got very educated, highly educated, highly intelligent people, but they come from different areas, right? And so, I mean, we got Sandy, who is that anchor from the town. Mary Gravines, again, she's been in town for 25 years or something like that. And then Jim, who is fantastic on the finance committee and has been great on the ZBIA, and then Joshua, and Carrie, who bring a lot of new enthusiasm and ideas, and I think it's great. It's fantastic, so. Okay. All those in favor of my motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. I want to thank you guys very much for your interest. Tom or Cody will get in touch with you shortly to set up that first meeting, and, you know, we're looking forward to what you guys can do. And you need to talk to John Shea.
Yeah. I'll go get an haircut.
There you go.
Excellent. All right.
Thank you, guys.
So, I'm a little behind, but I got Candy Niffin up next. The Community Preservation, Presentation on Community Preservation Act.
Right.
I should wear my glasses. I can't read, but.
It'll take a lot of time. I just wanted, wanted to, actually, there's three members of our committee here tonight, but I am speaking because I'm chairman, but they should jump in freely if I forget anything. But basically, I just want to introduce us, because we're a ballot support committee. We are registered, we, after this was voted to go onto the ballot, the CPA was voted to go onto the ballot, we, actually, there are nine of us on the committee, and we all felt, I think initially, and still, we're fighting this battle, but so many people don't even know what CPA is. And it stands for Community Preservation Act, and it was enacted in 2000. It's an assessment that the town people pay, the taxpayers pay, but also there's a state matching, matching grant, matching funds that the state provides on a fluctuating basis. It's, it's not always the same percentage, but for 24 years, we feel Halifax has worked this money on the table, while all the other towns around us, the entire Cape, and many, right now, it's 196 towns in the state that have adopted this. Around here, it's Halifax, East Bridgewater, Avon, and Brockton who have not. They're the only towns that have it, and East Bridgewater also has it on its ballot this year. But the way it works is the funds that we raise, 10% have to go into parks and open, or recreation and open space, 10% into affordable housing, and 10% into historical preservation. Doesn't affect our tax rate. It's not in our taxes. Our tax bill doesn't change. But what we've tried to do, we, we really have tried, I would say 70%, 75% probably of our work has been to try and get information out. We've posted on Facebook. We have a website, which is what we're primarily referring people to now, because everything we've done is on that website, and everything we will do is on that website. And it's, help me out, it's www.halifaxmahope.org. What, what we believe, we've done presentations. We're doing another presentation at the Mobile Home Park. We're doing, we're hoping to do a public presentation, an evening presentation before the end of October. We've put newspaper, we've put letters in the editor, to the, letters to the editor in the newspaper, and we're just trying to get the word out on how valuable this is. We have on our, on our website, we have, and we posted them on Facebook, community profiles, where we've actually taken communities that are CPA communities around here, we, on the profile, we tell you how much they brought in from a local level, how much from state grant, the state matching funds, and then what they've done with this money. And I think it's amazing what people have done, and unfortunately, everything here comes out of the town budget, one piece of pie really, and, one pie, and so things are getting kicked down the road. One of the things that we keep bringing up is the blacksmith shop. We have such a great historical complex there, but we can't go in the blacksmith shop because it's structurally unsound. I don't know where we're going to get the money to address that, but the CPA fund would be, would be a source of funding for that kind of work. We have a great playground. If we want to add a piece of equipment, if we want to replace a piece of equipment, the CPA fund is, is a source of that kind of funding. Affordable housing, unfortunately, it is a little bit getting confused with the MBTA zoning issue, but it really is not in any way involved with that. And it's not necessar, it's not, doesn't have to be a bad thing. Some towns have used CPA money to hire housing managers who really study the needs of the community and bring back recommendations. As long as we've lived here, which is over 40, well over 40 years, we have heard people say, my kids can't afford to live in Halifax. I raised them here, but they can't live here. It's too expensive. The CPA has, some of the towns have established rental assistance programs. They've established reu, reusing buildings and just slightly somewhat refurbishing them and turning them into apartments. I believe it's North Andover renovated a nursing, an abandoned nursing home into 29 housing units that are affordable housing. And one of the things that we, that this act does is it has abatements. People, seniors, moderate, earning the moderate income are, do not have to pay this assessment. Low-income families do not have to pay this assessment. So, so they, we, the act takes into account the fact that there are, there's definitely a need for housing. This gives us some opportunity of different ways to approach it. And I think, I, the other thing is, we don't have to spend any of this money in any given year. We have to allocate 10% to housing of all the money we get in. We have to allocate 10% of it to housing, 10% to recreation and open space, and 10% to historical preservation. The other 70% we can spend on any of those three areas, in any of those three areas. We can also wait until we have something that we need to do and let the money just accumulate interest, and it will grow, continue to grow. We, as a committee, have all sorts of projects that have been put aside, so I don't know how much of it is going to be left to grow in the initial years, but certainly, you know, as we address different issues, we'll be able to save money. Some towns have established, and this is a little progressive, but some towns have established housing trusts and conservation trusts, where they take some of the money each year and they put it in a housing trust fund, and, or they put it in a conservation trust fund, and the conservation commission, or the housing trust, that's run by a group that's of trustees of its own, but they, but it's a town group, and they, the town can put money in this so that, into a fund that they have control over and don't have to go back to town needing to buy a piece of land that comes available, if we're looking for a piece of land, for example, for housing or for open space, because we know that the land becomes available, and if we don't act quickly, we lose the opportunity. So, some towns have done that. There's no obligation to establish those, but there's so many opportunities that we have if we have funding. Right now, we don't have any money to, to do, address any of these things. We just keep picking the can down the road. So, the nine members of our committee are all longtime Halifax residents. We all raised our kids here. We all, they all, all our kids attended or still attend the Halifax schools, Silverway. We've all been on boards. We've all volunteered for the community in various different ways, and we all really care about the town. So, I'm just letting you know who we are. We, I think you know who we are, because we've been out there, but we're very sincere about this. We hope the community will get informed. There's a lot of opportunity that we're trying to provide to inform the community. We've had numerous questions. We have an email address that we established very first thing, and we've gotten quite a few questions, and we've answered all of them, and we've posted our answers, both on our website and on Facebook, so people can see what the questions are and hopefully learn from our answers. So, I, I have a folder that I'm going to leave that you probably don't want me, but give it to a friend.[1764.12] We have a brochure, we have a couple of flyers that we've established, and we're not done. So, thank you for your time. We would very much appreciate the selectman's support in the CPA. The Board of Selectmen did put the article on the town meeting warrant last May, and we had a run with it. So, we would really appreciate your support, and thank you for your time.
Thanks for that presentation, it's marvelous. So, I think, thank you. I think there is, there's a, we hear a lot about, we want to keep this a small town, we don't want big development, we don't want this, we don't want that. There's a lot of talk about that going on right now. But one of the ways that you can do that is when space, when land becomes available, we can buy it if we wanted to do that. You could take the development on Route 58. That land was vacant for years, up for sale for years. If the town thought it should be open space and made into nothing, or just left or made into a park or done whatever, the CPA funds would have been very helpful to do that. So, in my view, I think this is sort of like, you know, putting money aside for your retirement account, or your bank account, or your, you know, I'm going to buy a new house account, or buy a new car account, or whatever it is, to, for those particular purposes. So, I personally think it's a great idea, I voted in favor of it when we had it last spring. And I, I think it's, I think it's something that will, in the long run, definitely benefit the town, that's my view, so.
Yeah, I think you guys know where I stand on this one.
You're the instigator.
Yeah, possibly, yeah. One of the instigators, right. One of the, one of the battle cries for a lot of folks here in Halifax is, we want to preserve Halifax, we want to keep Halifax the special place that it is. In my opinion, one of the best tools this town can have is the CPA. That is exactly what this program is designed to do, is to look at our little communities that we have and set something up to keep them as they are, right? So, folks should really think long and hard about this one, but to me, it's a no-brainer. It's set up for exactly what the majority of our town wants, and for us to not take part would be a swing and a miss, in my opinion.
Yeah, so, you know, I did attend one of your meetings at the Triad. I did, I did ask a question I'm not sure I've heard the answer to quite yet about whether we can cap the housing bucket or not. I think one of the main things you're finding, or I'm finding, or I'm hearing from people, along with the confusion with the MBTA zoning law, getting lumped in with the housing and the CPA, is just the general thought of, this is just one more thing. And while I don't think it's just one more thing on the taxpayer, because I do see the benefits, the work that you've put in, the benefit it can provide. You're kind of juxtaposed with the school budget cuts and the school buses getting cut to preserve the history. Well, a lot of people are thinking about the current and now. So, I think that's one of your big battles, is you're facing what people are feeling now. If money was not an object, the CPA is a no-brainer. Because what you can do with it is precious, and you can't get back those historical things once they're gone. One of the big concerns I'm hearing, though, as I mentioned before, is the housing thing. I think if we could get an answer as to whether you could cap that 10% bucket and make it mandatory spending, that would be helpful. I don't know if that's possible or not. In other words, if you're collecting $100,000 a year and $10,000 has to go into the housing bucket, can we cap that at $20,000 to $30,000 to spend it on veterans, to spend it on rental assistance, rather than put aside to buy multi, you know, multiple pieces of property? Because the housing is the thing that people don't want, in my opinion. So, I think it'd be beneficial to pass the CPA, but to limit the 10% housing thing. Because everything else, I think, is a no-brainer. The 10% housing bucket, I think, would be beneficial to be capped. I don't know if that's even possible through the state, through the rules. And that's kind of what I was asking last time, as well.
Candy, you got it, or you want me to take it?
Well, why don't you go ahead?
Well, I don't think it's possible, Tom. I've kicked the tires with the state, I don't think it is. And I understand what you're saying, too, where you say housing, and the fur goes up on some folks' neck here.
Sure.
I think it might be a little short-sighted, though. Because let's say there's a program that we, we as a town want to do, we've limited ourselves to, no, hey, we have to spend it at this amount, you know what I'm saying? So, if there's a program down the road that we're like, oh, shoot, we would really have liked to have done this, we've painted ourselves into a corner if we establish that. And I'll remind you, too, Tom, that everything we decide to do has to be voted on at town meeting, you know? So, if it's something that the town folks don't want to do, we're not, we're not going to do it.
Yeah, no, I can appreciate that, and I don't, I'm not looking to argue, I just think that if you can pass the CPA and get 90% of the things you're looking for and give 10% of it back to the people who have concerns at the expense of passing the CPA, maybe it's a middle ground would be appropriate, if possible. In other words, if the blacksmith shop, and the trails, and the open space, and the tennis courts are no brainers, and the concern is the housing portion of things, maybe a cap, if possible, and again, if it's not, no problem. But if you can assist the veterans and get rental assistance and do things like that that alleviate the concerns for the big project that people do have fears about, if you can get 90% of what you're looking for done.
Sure.
I would be in favor of that as a slam dunk.
Sure.
Because the rest of it makes a lot of sense to me. I think that's the one concern people have, and I think that's the biggest obstacle.
Can I ask a question? So, the, the way this system works is the, there's a CPA committee who's established, is that established by election, or by appointment, or?
Bylaw. It's a bylaw that, what would happen is, if it's passed, then the bylaw, selectmen would have to develop the bylaw.
I see.
And the state has excellent resources for that. And the bylaw would establish the committee.
Yeah.
That receives the, that really researches it and decides what to recommend. And then, when they finish, each year, looking at the applications, they then put an article on the town meeting warrant to recommend to the town that they vote these projects. And then, it has to be passed.
So, the reason I ask that question is just to address Tom's concern, because it seems to me that that composition of that committee, that could be one of the, not necessarily qualification, but an issue, that you would, whoever's on the board that make appointments would ask those people on that committee, say, "What do you think about this? Is this something that you'd be interested in?" And if the board and that person, you know, that committee agrees to it, we pretty much have done what you wanted. It's just not, not going around whatever the law is, I'm not sure on it. But it seems to me that that's one way of managing it. You know, we could, whoever's interviewing the members of the CPA committee, because you can't do anything until the CPA committee makes a recommendation, right? Is that how I understand it?
But there are some specifics to the CPA committee in terms of representation. Plant has to, there has to be someone representing the planning board, conservation.
Housing.
Housing.
Parks.
And parks. There's five that are required.
And rec.
And recreation. And then, four members, up to four members at large. But if I could just, I agree with John, in our, in the research we've done, it doesn't look like there's any flexibility to cap any of the three. But the thing that would concern me about capping it at $20,000 or $30,000 is you can't do much with that.
And I think, not to interrupt, but I think that would be the point of the people who don't, would not be in favor of the CPA. That would be the sort of control that they would like to see in place with this one portion of it. That's what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, a good, it's not just what you buy, but it's what you, a lot of towns have leveraged the money. There's so many grants out there for housing, different kinds of housing, refurbishing, just so many grants, and so many of them are state and federal, and they require matching funds. We can use CPA funding as the matching funds. I think, I, correct, I don't know, I think there's no argument that housing is an issue, that we have, we need more housing. How we do it, CPA gives us a lot of control in how we choose to do it. And so, I'm not sure that capping it is a solution. There may be another solution, but I think people need to remember that this was established to encourage towns to take care of things that they can't do in their regular budget, and to give them a way to do it without raising taxes, without.
Override.
Without having to go for an override, because we're in an emergency situation at that point, and things are going to cost more. But I think that the fact that we have control, that we have to put, yes, we have to put, I'm going to tell you that in, I'm almost certain that we can't cap it, but we're still investigating that. But we can't spend it without town meeting approval. We can't, there's no committee that administers this fund, except the voters from Halifax. And so, if something we don't want, like a three-story whatever, is being recommended, they don't have to accept that.
So, can I just jump in here? If that being the case, and I think the chair mentioned this, if all the money has to be approved at town meeting, then how do we act quickly on a piece of property that just goes up for sale?
That's what I was explaining in the housing trust and the conservation trust fund, is these are, like, we go to town meeting, and now we're, we have to appropriate 10%, 10%, 10%. But we can take some of that money that's in, let's just say, housing, and we can put it in a separate account as a housing trust, which then becomes available to whoever we put in charge of that. It's a separate Board of Trustees, it's not.
So, money could be spent without the town voting?
That money could be, but the town is voting to give it to them and give them the right to do that. So, if the town says, "No, no, no, we don't want, we want to keep total control," we don't establish a housing trust fund. That's just one option, or conservation is another.
So, if the town establishes a conservation trust, just as an example, to switch it from housing.
Sure.
Can the town take it back at the next town meeting, or is that an ongoing process once it's in trust, is it staying in trust?
Oh, no, they, they don't ever have to do that.
But is it, are they revocable funds where they could be transferred back out of the trust, back into town control for open meeting approval? Or once they're in the trust, do they stay in the trust?
I will find that out, because I can't really give you a definite answer, but I can say that the town, let's do, they don't have to appropriate all that money, they can take a portion of that 10% that's in there. And let's just say, I think Norwell puts $90,000 a year into a conservation fund, or, there's a few towns that do this, and they don't like what's happening, whatever, they don't, they don't, they don't have to put any more money in. It's very possible that they can get taken out, I don't know that for sure. I don't think it's as, as firm as the three buckets that we have to put the money in, but it's a good question, and I think we'll find, I will find that out, because.
Just as a last thing, I just want to make it pretty clear that I appreciate the effort and time everyone's put in, and on its own, I think it's a terrific idea and should be passed. I'm just presenting some of the obstacles that I'm hearing.
Sure.
And trying to work around them for some people who are just viewing this as one more thing, one more obligation, one more drain on my wallet, and trying to find solutions to find, hey, listen, this is not as presented, there are ways around it. I think one of the main things you're seeing besides the housing thing being coming, the main issue in town, is the control that some people feel they're being stripped of. So, I think that once money is out of the commission, or out of the bucket, the bucket, 10% bucket, and into a trust, I think that's one step closer from it being out of our pockets and in somebody else's control, more government, more oversight, more things. And I think that's the biggest problem, not just in Halifax, but in a lot of places that you're feeling, and I think that's a big obstacle that you're facing. Again, though, on its own, the CPA should have been passed 25 years ago, a lot of money was left on the table, we're late to it, maybe better late than never. But I think some people are just looking at their bottom line and saying, hey, listen, it's one more thing, I have no control of it, somebody else will be spending my money on things that I wouldn't necessarily vote for, and I think it's one more thing out of their control.
And that's, I promise this doesn't last, so.
I'm done.
And I'll be done. That's a very important point, and that's why, as a community, we don't have to establish a housing trust fund or a conservation trust fund. That's an option that some communities, not all, have taken advantage of. So, I think I want to make sure that I didn't create any confusion there, that's just another.
Yeah, no, I don't think you did, I just think it's a, it's a thing that's out there. So, if I'm, if I'm opposed to the CPA, which I'm not opposed to the CPA, if I was opposed and I was saying, hey, listen, all of a sudden, somebody else is going to put the board together to establish a housing trust, what does that look like? That's one step away, further step away from control of things I have concerns about.
And that's a good point, because the committee has to be established.
And I think that's just.
I mean, it's all ahead of all of that. And the rest of what I was going to say that's important is, we have to realize that a lot of what we can do with CPA is something that's going to have to be done at some point. A lot of it, not all of it, but a lot of it, whether it's a liability issue, I personally think the tennis courts are a liability issue because of the shape they're in. If we have to go to the town for an override, that affects our tax rate, that affects their tax bill. If we can do a lot of this through CPA, it's, it's, the average homeowner in Halifax, according to our latest figures as of today, would be assessed $88 a year, $44 in two payments. And I'd rather do that than have my taxes just continue to go up. And they're also permanent. When you go for an override, that becomes part of your new tax rate. So, so this is a better, we see this as a better way to fund what we think is going to have to be funded in the long run, anyway. But I appreciate your comments, and I appreciate you bringing up those questions, because we don't have the answers to a couple of them, and we will work to get them.
Well, there's also some, always the complaint is, the state can always change their mind, which they can, but right now, there's a matching fund of some extent. So, whatever we put in, we get a certain amount.
Yeah, last year was 21% matching.
Right, so next year could be zero or 50, who knows? At least they keep it going.
Lowest it's been was 17, in a year with 17 and a year with 19.
And the expectations are that now that the housing market is picking up, because that's the source of funding, is from the Registry of D, whatever happens at the, you know, the payments, that's a big source of the state funding. It all goes into the CPA. And also, we went through COVID, and, I mean, if we had done this 24 years ago, the match was 100%, but hindsight's 20/20. Even at 21%, where can you get that kind of return on your money right now?
And just, and I don't want to keep going here, guys, I know. But, but there's never a perfect time to do CPA. We're going to have great years, we're going to have lean years. My, my take is, the town just has to decide whether they want to do it or not. And there's going to be times when it's really easy, and times when it's a little difficult. But I still think it's a program that we need to, to maintain through the good times and the bad.
And we've established a relationship with the people at the state. We can call and ask questions, and we can send them questions, and it's a great resource. And that's really what we're trying to do and spend our time doing, is just getting the answers to questions that people have and putting it out there, letting people know what it is.
You've done a lot of work, wonderful effort, so.
It's a lot of work, but it's very interesting.
What do you want us to do? You want us to?
Well, I, we're not, I'm not going to ask you to take a position right now in front of us, but we would love a vote of support from the Board of Selectmen and pretty much any other committee that would like to support this CPA program.
I'll take that step, and I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen supports the CPA.
You, can I? I am gonna, just because of my involvement in the committee, John, I think I will abstain.
That's okay.
Just, just so there's no thoughts of impropriety or anything, I'm going to abstain.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Any chance we could postpone this till two weeks from now?
We could.
Just for some foresight, I mean, it's still, it's still before the election, correct?
All right, so let me withdraw my motion. It's a procedural thing there, so.
Again, this is not, a lack of support for it, I just want to make sure that I have all the questions I need answered prior to doing so.
That's great. So, why don't we put this on the agenda for whatever our next meeting date is? I don't know what it is, October something.
Okay.
Fantastic, great work, thank you. Thank you for your efforts.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you, guys.
All right. So, we are a little bit behind, but we have the Police Department Chief, sorry about that. If, let's see, Walter, Walter Peterson?
Second, second time I hear you. So, I just wanted to thank everyone for putting this on the agenda. I'd like to bring forward Mr. Walter, better known as Sonny Peterson, for the Board to Consider Reporting as a Special Police Officer. Peterson has retired from the Plymouth Police Department, and he wants to serve and continue to serve in a law enforcement capacity. He worked for Plymouth from 2015 to 2024. Before that, he was employed as a correction officer for the state of 2016, 2015. He graduated from Boston English High School and currently lives in Plymouth. We conducted a comprehensive background check on him, as we always do on our employees, and I think he'd be a great addition to our team right now. So, I would recommend that most of the work, you know, includes their interview with Peterson, that they appoint him as a special police officer.
So, do you want to just tell us a little bit about yourself, so we know who we're talking with?
Sure, as Chief said, I worked for the Plymouth Police, I was a patrolman for nine years, and was recently retired in July. What looked great financially, I missed the job. I loved the community policing, I loved dealing with the people in the community, I loved responding to calls for service and helping people when I could, and I'd love to do it again. I checked around, there's three or four local towns that do allow their specialists to do patrol shifts. Halifax is my first choice, and hopefully, my only choice I need. I'd just love to get back on the road, being a police officer, getting to be on patrol.
All right, and questions from the board?
No, I kind of have the standard question that I ask all, all our potentials, is conflict resolution. Do you have a style, you know, your approach seeing this escalating conflict? Would you have a style of de-escalization, or what's your approach?
My, my favorite.
My, my favorite way I, I like to deal with people, I treat them like people, I talk to them like people, like I'm a person, not a police officer, coming, talking down to a resident. Friendliness, politeness, killing with kindness works 99% of the time, there's always going to be that 1% that it won't work on, but I think the way I talk to people, I, I talk to them as a person, like, and I relate to what situation they're going through, for 99% of the time, we've all been through the same situation, and I make them feel like I understand them, and I'm not there to judge them, not there to control them, I'm there to help them as a person.
Thanks.
Tom?
I don't have much, thank you for your interest.
Very good, thank you. All right, so I, any, the board want to make any discussions, anything? So we have a strong recommendation from the chief, he's, the, this candidate seems like a wonderful addition to our, our police force, and so I would move that we appoint Walter Peterson as a special police officer for the term ending June 30th, 2025. They all, they all end at the same time.
Second.
Second, any discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, thank you very much for your interest. We look forward to seeing you around town.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Chief, while you're here, do you want to talk to us about littering?
Yeah, so, um.
And trespassing.
In one of your previous meetings, there was some discussion on considering adopting some, some bylaw changes for the town, regards to trespassing and I think littering, I think source of it was, was the beach, once again. So, so I talked to Cody, and I explained to him that sometimes we create too many laws, we already have strong laws in the books, state laws that are enforceable, that have, you know, severe penalties for littering, for trespassing, you know, trespassing after notice is arrestable in our presence, you know, if we have an issue, or the officer sent issues at the beach, and somebody doesn't want to leave, he can be placed under arrest, or she can be placed under arrest. As far as, as the littering, you know, there's a state law in, in, you know, in place right now, that we can issue citations for, for littering from a motor vehicle. If somebody litters in, in our, in our presence and they refuse to pick up, to pick up the, the litter, there's a $5,500 fine that can be, that can be imposed on them. So I think, you know, it's, it's also the board's decision if they want to, you know, add bylaws, you know, to, to town bylaws, but I, at this point, I would think it would just be reamending the wheel, because then we got to address the issues on how to collect those monies. That's one of the issues that we, we've had with some of our previous bylaws, that were just not, you know, written correctly, and, and they don't have a, a mechanism for us to collect these fines, you know, we had the problem with, with the, the dog licensing. You know, I, I found out that we hadn't, we had never brought anybody to court to collect late fees, and so I reached out to the court, and I'm like, you know, he goes, well, you know, we'll collect them, we'll, we'll have the hearings, you know, but no one, no one's ever asked to have hearings. So we're telling people that if you don't license your dog, you're going to get fined, and then we don't follow through with it, so there's, you know, there's no hammer to it, so it just goes, it doesn't, there's no enforcement. So, I mean, I can, I can, you know, email you guys the, the chapters and sections, so trespassing after notice is 266-120, I mean, it's like the arrestable in our presence, it, it, the, the highest penalty is, is incarceration in 30 days in the House of Correction. So I mean, there's a lot of teeth to that. Same thing with trespassing on private property with a motor vehicle. You know, we'll tell a lot of the residents, I had some discussions with, with the Mia's ice cream shop, because they were having people park their vehicles there and then walk to the beach. It wasn't posted, just post. Post that, that violated will be towed away, and you know, and, and if, worst case, we can, we know, if they're there and they're trespassing, it's a fine, they're all fined. You know, again, obviously, it has to happen in our presence, it can happen fast. So I think there's, there's plenty of, of teeth in, in these laws. I, I know that the Park Commission's at a, at a meeting yesterday, there was some, some self-discuss, to try to, you know, set up a plan of attack for next year in advance, so we have people in place, things in place to, to address those issues, so hopefully get, get those residents some relief for, for next year, because we all know that this, this year was kind of a mess.
Well, I, I brought up the, these two things, so the trespass part was, somebody suggested to me that maybe there are, there are too many all-terrain vehicles or motorbikes, frankly, I don't know, but out on like the, the Y property or something like that, I don't know if that's true or not.
So that, so that problem is, is, again, some of the, some of the youth of, of, you know, enjoying open space, I should say, obviously, it's in, it's in private property. We, that property is posted, and, and it's, it's, it's one of those balancing acts that, that, you know, we kind of know that what's happening, but we kind of like allow it to happen, because, you know, if, if you start to come down on some of these kids, they'll, you know, they'll be damaged, cause potential damage to, to the water, to the water department and stuff, you know, other, other things. So it's kind of, you know, there's violations there, you know, we have, we have things in our, in our toolbox that we can address it, but again, discretion plays, you know, a big part in some of these things.
Yeah, well, I think enforcement of any of this stuff is a problem anyway, but it, I didn't realize that that was already posted property, so.
It is.
It, that kind of solves that problem. On, on the littering part of it, something similar, I didn't realize that there are state laws that have to do with littering, and I don't know, maybe one of the things we could do is ask the Parks Department to post signs that specifically tell you, don't leave your trash on the ground, right? I mean, that kind of thing, is that, I assume that's where most of this is coming from?
And I agree, I, and, and, the, the, again, the fine line that we, you know, we, so we have, we have the, we have the, so I, I don't, I mean, it could happen, like, you know, like, they're always, you know, 99% of the time, people will, will, you know, abide by the laws, and there's always that 1%, I could see where, where somebody, you know, in front of the officer grabs a, a, you know, a bag of, of cans or whatever, dumps them on the ground, and refuses to pick them up. It could happen, right? At that point, you know, we, we can address it. You know, the, the stuff that's happening is that the littering is, is left behind because the overflow of garbage barrels and stuff like that, so it's difficult for, for us to enforce it that way. You know, because again, it hasn't happened in our presence, we haven't seen it, so that's kind of technical.
Well, I think, so I, again, the whole idea of even putting a bylaw in place would have been really to emphasize the point, I think most people follow the law, I, I mean, you know, even if they don't like it, they'll follow what they're supposed to do, and if they see a sign that says, don't litter, they're, they're going to be more careful than if they don't see one. So I think that's helping, I thought the bylaw on, on littering might be something along those lines, too, but if you're telling us.
I, I can forward you the, the, the master laws, and you, and the town can kind of, you know, have our legal people look at it, and then, you know, table something that's more, you know, for us.
Yeah.
Because I mean, obviously, like, one of the sections of the law is that, you know, if, if, if we, if we have reports of somebody dumping the, more than 77 cubic feet of trash, okay, not only can we, can we fine them over $5,000, but if it's, they use a vehicle or do it, we can confiscate the vehicle, impound that vehicle. You know, but again, that's, that's for the cases, like, we've actually had cases where a neighbor would call on, on somebody else, you know, backing up their car to what they think is, is, you know, abandoned property and dumping, you know, their, their household garbage. So we've had, we actually charged somebody, you know, because obviously, they leave their household garbage and it has their addresses, you know, they're smart.
Too smart.
Smart, so, so, yeah, so I mean, I, I can, I can forward you that stuff, and you got any touch, speak.
I think that'll, I think that'll be helpful, and I, and again, it, I, I agree with you, we make, sometimes we make too many laws, and it, it, it becomes difficult to even address them. We, I, I, I don't presume us to appoint Mr. Peterson to stand, you know, guard looking for trash every place, that would be stupid. So, but I do think, you know, I do think it, sometimes if we can just, just, just make the public statement, whether, and not, not through here, really, but through signage, probably, that says, you know, if you litter, it's, it's, it's a potential penalties and so on and so forth, most people will follow that, I mean, it's just not, I mean, most people aren't, aren't showing up to throw trash on the beach, they just happen to, you know, like you say, the trash, I think they should take the darn trashcans out of there, it should be carry-in, carry-out.
Yeah, I think that they changed that towards the end of the season, I think it was beginning of the season, they had the trash. The committee changed their mind, and now it's, you know.
But, and then the Parks meeting yesterday, they discussed about removing the barrels. They didn't make a full decision yet, our suggestion was to them, no, not to do it in the middle of the season, because if you already have.
Oh, yeah.
Out there.
They're expecting.
And they're there, the people are just going to throw it there no matter what. But if they start off next year, and there's nothing down there, then they can adopt the policy to carry it and carry it out.
And I, I, I mean, you can go to any state park or federal, national park, that's the way it is, and, you know, you just don't, you don't, you don't look for a trashcan, which prevents raccoons, bears, mice, all that other problems, and it looks much nicer, so. Well, if you could send us that material, and then, I suppose at some point, maybe we'll just make a, a recommendation to the Parks Department to get some signage up, I know that we were supposed to do that last year, and for whatever reason, they didn't get around to it, but maybe we can work on that over the winter a little bit, and some of these problems will hopefully just not pester you folks and us as much as they have been. Anything from the board?
No, just, well, Ted, you were at the meeting the other night, did they talk about an attendant at all? Have they had any luck with any sort of attendant for?
The Police Department really is pushing for that attendant to be down.
Yeah.
Because not for enforcement, just for.
Set of eyes.
Set of eyes, and if there is an issue, just get on the phone.
Correct.
To call the Police Department down there. So, yes.
Yeah, it sounds like you have the tools in your, in your bag with the laws, but it's just a question of putting eyes on it.
Right, we can't put someone down there operationally for 16 hours.
Yeah, on a weekend, yeah.
No, that's crazy.
Yeah.
Okay, Tom, any comments, questions? Okay, Chief, thank you very much.
Thanks, Ted.
Excellent.
Thanks, Ted.
All right, so I think I've caught up, sort of.
I think we're on skin.
Let's, you want to go to the top and just do the warrants and so on, get that covered?
I move to approve a, affirm approval of the following warrant and commitment, vendor warrant number 25 for $405,673.75, ambulance commitments from 9/2, 2024 through 9/8, 2024 for $84,819.22.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous?
I move to approve of the following warrants, payroll warrant number 26 for $459,045.45, vendor warrant number 27 for $611,590.54, and a withholding warrant number 28 for $161,775.65.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. And so let me skip down to G, approval of a selectmen meeting minutes, has everybody reviewed them, are we ready to move on, those?
Good.
All right, can I have a motion to approve the August 13th regular session meeting?
So moved.
Any, do we have seconds?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous, how about August 26th?
So moved.
Any second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous, and August 27th?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous, okay. Now, Green, Use of Town Green, we have a request from the Beautification Committee to approve the kickoff event for the Fall Cleanup Week, which will be from October 5th, 2024 to October 13th. We will pass out litter-busting supplies from 9:00 to 12:00. If people come 8:00 to 4:00, there will be signup for pizza and raffle. I think what they want is October 5th.
Yep.
Time to set up at 8:45, start at 9:00, end at 1:00. I guess, okay, and is there room there?
Yep, no one else is using the Town Green at that.
All right, so I'll make a motion to approve the Use of the Town Green.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous, signature form, so for Council on Aging, um.
Yep, I have the question.
The Council on Aging is requesting that Barbara Curtis have signature authority when the Director Darlene Reagan is absent. I'll make that motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Here is the signature form, that, that, that. All right, um, updates on things, Cody's not here, I don't think there's any update on the MBTA, that's, the next step will be October 5th, is that the right day?
The 10th?
I'm sorry, what, oh, no, it's that Thursday, whatever that Thursday is, the 10th? Let me check, let's try and make sure. Or I go misstating things. Uh, October the 10th, we'll have a, there'll be a public hearing on the MBTA housing proposals. I don't think anything else needs to be done before that. Town administrators update, I don't think.
I'll have a ready to.
Yeah, okay.
Just a quick question on the MBTA, on the 10th, do we know if Representative LaNatra will be in attendance that night herself?
Not positive, I am expecting to have a disc, talk with her this week, so I'll try and find out. I, I, we've asked her to, we've asked them to, so, starting a couple of months ago, we, we've had these weekly meetings with Old Colony Planning Council, Ms. LaNatra's office,